Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2002 Forum Meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board, our first of the year. Before we begin, I'd like to thank the Town Board personally for reappointing me as Chair, still entrusting me with that awesome duty, and also to thank Mr. Veeth for being sworn in again and agreeing to be reappointed.
Yay!
Thank you. Please take note of the exits around the room. Note that these are no longer exits whatsoever.
No.
And if you need to run out quickly, there's a door there and a door there, and that's about it. So from seven, we're down to two. Now, please join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Paldino ground-mounted public panels. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're open. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Because we did have an audience member speak last time. Ms. Fransen, Ms. Paldo, any comments?
Uh, no, I don't believe we...
You didn't even have escrow, right? And we have a resolution prepared. Board members, any comments?
No, I think we discussed this last time, and again, I thank my colleagues for giving the feedback that they did for the site visit. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys. If there's no comment from the public and no further comments from the board, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I believe this is Vice Chair Dexter's.
Resolution to grant site plan approval, Paldino Ground Mounted Solar, Resolution Number 2023-61A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval for the project, as shown on the site plan set, and authorizes the Chair or his designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions: one, payment of all fees and escrow. That's it.
Second?
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any days or extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to the Paldinos. Next item on the agenda is a workshop. This is for Relia Properties LLC. We've had a little bit of conversation about this so far, and welcome back. Mr. Berger, you look very tanned. Have you had a nice vacation? Good for you. Come on up.
He's always looking for that warm weather.
This is located, by the way, 1564 Route 9G for longtime residence. This is known as the former Nichols Oxygen Service, and there's a variety of uses on the site right now, and the new owner, Mr. Relia, is seeking to expand some uses, add a new one, mushroom cultivation and growing for the mushrooms that one consumes to dine, as well as take some of his business in landscaping and bring it to the site.
Basically, yes.
Trade over to you.
That's basically exactly what we're proposing, keeping the site plan that was approved before, modify it with those two changes, adding mushrooms for the ultimate burger, hopefully, that's what it's for, and storage of his trucks and landscaping in another location so that they don't have to travel so far from his site in Wappingers. Just makes more business sense to have them closer to his clients up here. We're also seeking to meet with the DOT to close... The original DOT was to close the southern entrance and use the northern entrance. We think that that's the opposite of what should occur.
We thought so, too, at the time.
And so we're in the process. I have contacted them, but they're waiting for the planning board to get further ahead in review, as you know, so...
Because they have to have a number for it.
That's a standard process, but we will be meeting with them to discuss opening the south and closing the north.
Thank you. It definitely makes more sense now.
Yeah, we thought that from day one. We agree with the planning board on that, and that's our objective. Again, we have contacted them and are waiting for the normal process of planning to proceed to the point where we could get their review and input.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Comments, Ms. Fransen? I did answer your question, by the way.
Oh, you did?
Yes. This was an expansion of 108-6.2B, I believe, so it's an expansion of a non-conforming scale, non-conforming use.
Non-use, okay.
And it wasn't adaptive reuse, as I answered. The only time that we've had a couple of proposals for adaptive reuse, they didn't make any sense, was a plain building like this. That section, we believe, is really meant to be like a barn that you want to turn into a restaurant, or a gas station into a restaurant, or something like that. A church into a restaurant, or something else. So in other words, it would need to be some sort of nicer historic structure, so this is just under 108-6.2B.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I've been looking at the prior maps because...
Microphone, please.
Sorry.
I was just trying to make sense of the prior approval so I could do the comparison, and so Cynthia, at this point, has provided me with, I think, the appropriate maps. She was just going to take a picture of the table because the comparison is done to November. Some of the maps we had were from June. The actual site plan references a 222 map, so there's various different maps.
Uh-oh.
And some of the scales weren't matching up, so that's why I wanted to make sure I was working with the latest and greatest.
I believe there was an amendment at one point.
There was.
He came back after it was approved...
And that's the one we used.
And then it was amended.
Yes.
So that's one of the two different sets.
Yeah, so I think we need the 222, or thereabouts, to do the comparison, like I said, because things weren't really... They weren't consistent.
I'll check. I believe that's the one we used. I'll check.
Okay. The other reason I...
I came to the town, and that was given to me at a meeting here.
Okay.
May remember. I went back and used what I was providing, which was the amended one. I'll verify.
Great. So when I have everything, whatever's the latest and greatest, I can do the comparison. I think a site visit will be very useful. I don't know that everything that's happening out there is entirely shown on the plan, so I think that'd be useful to understand, again, the scale question, which is really what I'm especially focusing on. And I did note there were some trees that were shown on the original 2019 plan that aren't shown on this plan. It didn't look like they were being removed, but they're not highlighted, so I don't know if they have been removed.
Well, I just... We used the most current survey, so they maybe were removed.
Okay.
So we can verify that, but we worked off of the most current survey, so...
Okay. And then...
Is that when the property was purchased?
It was right about that time, yeah.
So, and then, the reason I brought up adaptive reuse was, there was actually a note on the plans that made reference in the bulk standards to adaptive reuse.
Yeah, that was just a note that was left over from the last site plan. We kept those notes on.
Hence...
We basically kept all the notes that were on there from the original approval.
So...
Thinking that it was a modification. We didn't want to lose those notes.
Yeah, so the plan was, seemed to be relying on the adaptive reuse portion to be able to get to this 50%, but the actual resolution referred to the non-conforming use section.
Scale.
So, yeah, it should say scale.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the resolution said use, but thank you for clarifying, because it should say scale, if that's the intent.
We may have changed that. We just kept all the original approval notes since that was an approved site plan, but we can...
Great. So I have comments, but I think once I know for sure what the final latest and greatest table is, then I can...
Yeah.
I can issue that. Thank you.
Understood. Makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Sotero, comments?
Yeah, so, you know, I had already made some comments in my letter in regards to, I think there should be some containment of, you know, the stockpiles that are going to be in the back for the topsoil and...
Yeah, I think we agree on that.
You know, the stone. I think it was proposed to not have any, you know, containment. I know I was on the Wapping... I was advising the Wappingers Planning Board when, you know, you came in for the one down in Wappingers, and there was containment.
Yes.
You know, for those, like, piles, because I just don't think, you know, covering the piles with tarps is going to go cut it, because over time, they won't be covered, and, you know, the tarps will go bad, and blah, blah, blah.
We'll provide a...
So then, you know, I had... You had already said that you're working with the Department of Transportation on the entrance.
Yes.
So what I brought up, you know, in my letter and discussed at the last meeting was, we need some mechanism to ensure that the improvements are done. There's... Normally, there would be a building permit that we could attach a condition to issuance of the building permit or the CO that the state highway improvements be completed, but here, the only possible building permit that could be issued is for that little 1,200 square foot, like, addition to, I believe, the auto repair, and who knows if that's ever going to be done. So we need, like, a mechanism to make sure that the DOT improvements are done. They weren't done, you know, the last time, we didn't have, like, a mechanism in place for the prior applicant, so we don't...
We'll work with you on what you feel, bond, or something that you...
No, I think the only... I think the best way to do it, honestly, is to make the installation of the improvements a condition of site plan approval and signing, and signing of the map.
That's going to be difficult, because to get a DOT permit, I need site plan approval.
Well, we can get, like, conditional.
Well, it has to be a stamped map.
No, I...
And when we got our DOT permit for hospice, I had to give them a copy of the site plan.
Well, there's, there's, there's a new DOT permit guy now, Bill LaRose.
Okay.
You were working with Joe Taylor.
Joe Taylor.
And Chucky, who I haven't been up to.
Bill, like LaRose, is very, 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 very good. I've been working with him on jobs up around here.
Okay.
I can go help you with that.
Okay. I mean, that's... I just was picking up what we had.
Yeah, no, we'll...
If that's not an issue anymore, then I'm... I don't reach out...
No, we'll work it out, but we need to, we need to make sure that the DOT improvements are, like, done.
I don't have a problem with that. If you do the work before the site plan's signed, I'm sure we can arrange...
Yeah, I mean, so, fine. So that's that.
That's a nice issue.
And then the only, the only, you know, like, other thing is, I went to the site last week while I was up here, and honestly, Steve, the back of the site's a mess.
I've been cleaning up for two days. It's 100% better.
But keep in mind, a lot of, most of that was there before he bought it.
You know, the wood, all... Whatever, it doesn't matter. I mean, it was a mess when I went there.
I cleaned up a lot of it.
The stack, like, wood, there was C and D debris with broken asphalt that was brought in, there was muddle, and again, I know it's been raining, it hasn't stopped, like, raining, I get it, but I let the planning board members, they're going to do, like, a site walk, so hopefully, you know, it's been cleaned up.
Steve's been actively trying to maintain the site, so...
I cleaned up quite a bit.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah.
But I just want to mention, remind, yes, there was some stuff done by Steve, but most of that, the whole area, if you look at the 2021 map, it was there before he closed on it, which was just a year ago. So yes, he's done some work, we're not going to, not state that, but it's not all his, and he's, he's, he's committed to cleaning it up and making sure it looks good.
And people come back there at night and throw mattresses and...
That's the problem, it's open site.
And, you know, people dump wood back there, so we're going to change it, you know, put a gate or something.
People, people come in and dump, I mean, it looks like it's, you know, split, split wood for sale.
Well, that I did. I took the logs that were there...
Yeah.
And I took a shear, you know, on an excavator, and I sheared them up into firewood, and then I'm going to haul now.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's okay. I mean, if you're going to do fire... Well, I assume that that's okay by zoning.
It's, it's not to use.
So, yeah, to sell, so, I mean, all that, all that's...
We didn't do it to sell it, we did it to reduce it, because now it's easier to haul.
But if you are going to, but if you are going to do something like that, you know, it's fine. It just needs to be shown on the plan where the area for, you know, you know, the piles of wood are going to be, or whatever, as, as long as it's shown on the plan, that's fine.
Yeah.
So...
I think Houston does really just temporarily do the cleanup site. That's not something he's proposing.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want anybody dumping wood in there, so we'll gate it or whatever.
No, I just assumed it was wood from your jobs that you brought there.
No.
Okay. So people just come in and just dump?
Yeah.
Well, there's a guy that parks a couple of trucks there.
I mean, not that I'm surprised, but, I mean...
And he dumps there, but I just got to tell him that's it, yeah. So I cleaned it up, and I said, "Yeah, okay, you can put a little bit of wood, and then turn it into, like, a hundred quart." So we took our shear, we grounded up, you saw the pile of wood.
Yeah, right, the mulch, yeah.
And then I'm going to clean it up, and then I can, if I can take it, it's got to be nicely, and then I'll shear it again, or grind it in the chips or something, but...
All right. Well, if that's going to be, if that's just a temporary thing, that's fine, but if it's going to be something permanent, again, you know, it's fine. You just, you just need to show it on Joe's plan...
At this point, I'm not...
...that the planning board's going to approve.
Containment.
Right, and there's containment and erosion control.
At this point in time, we're not planning on doing that. That was temporary.
Okay, so, I'm good. You guys will see the site when you do the walk.
As, and I like to say, it's the wild, wild east over there sometimes.
It is.
Ms. Moss, any comments? Ms. Paldo?
Um, no, just, I can work with Bonnie on, on sorting out the approvals, I think, are clear, what was approved. I think the issue is that perhaps the maps don't reflect.
I agree with that.
But the resolutions were clear. So I think, working from there, we should be able to sort out what the scale was then and what is permitted now.
What we're doing. I agree, the map is not consistent with the approval resolutions, is what I noted, but I didn't want to alter the map with that, the board's involvement, since that's what is the approved site map.
That was a messy application as well, just being honest with you, because the scale issue is already hard enough, as you know.
Yes.
You've been here long enough, like me.
Yes.
So, but, the reason, I explained this, I think, to Michelle. The reason why we need to have a new special use permit is that's what we use to expand it.
Not a problem.
And so if it reduces, we need to have a new special use permit to say, "Hey, instead of just 3%, you can expand another 4% down the line."
Right. You're amending it, so you actually have more room to expand.
Okay.
Because we want to, we're actually trying to preserve your right to move forward on that.
We understand, that makes sense. The way you explained it to us made sense.
Good, thank you.
We're not just, we're agreeing with all that. We're ready to resubmit.
The other thing is, you have an approved site plan now, right?
Yes.
That's going to be signed, so you could go to DOT and start that work under that approval.
Hey, you're saying since we, in conversation with them, since we're starting a new application, they want a secret number.
Yeah, but that's their secret number, isn't it? That's not...
Yeah, but they, it gets sent through the circulation process.
Okay.
Remember, we'll make it work.
Did we classify it type 2? Can't you send them that?
I sent them what I had. I'll try it again.
I thought we did it the last meeting.
Who are you working with over there? Bill LaRose?
No, you got to go over to, through the design.
We did it in December.
That's the state...
Bill LaRose is the permit engineer.
I know, but it doesn't go to him first.
I mean, we classified it as type 2 in December, so there is no more seeker.
There is no more seeker.
But typically, we circulate, and you haven't done circulation.
Wait, if there's no, if there's no seeker, there's no circulation. We circulate for seeker.
I thought you were going to circulate. Okay, you're right.
Because...
I stand on it, yeah.
No, we have...
We did not do this.
I was gonna say, I didn't think we adopted it yet.
That's why I...
So it was opposed.
Okay.
Because the, the last time we met was December 6th, we didn't meet them before.
I will attempt to contact the DOT again, and I'll get the same...
Well, so then, we would need to make that classification before you reach back out to DOT.
That's what I thought, but I can certainly try again.
Why did we pull the resolution? I'm forgetting.
Special use permit.
Oh, that's right.
We weren't clear on whether it needed a special use permit, and the application was incomplete without it.
And, uh...
And that is why it's been pulled.
Okay, so at the next, if you can get us a special use permit application, we'll type the action and deem it type 2.
Yeah, we're ready to submit, but I didn't want to submit before our meeting tonight, because I want to see if there's something that can at the meeting, so we're ready to submit, and we'll be ready.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Mr. Veeth, any comments?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Waters?
Uh, none at this time.
Vice Chair Dexter?
Um, just about the site walk, I think I saw something that said January 13th was a workable date.
That was originally, but it's now February 20th.
What's the reason for that, July?
Because availability.
Oh.
13th not available, but after that, it...
You could do the 13th.
So you can do 13th.
I think, no, he's not available, he's for the 13th, right?
I thought that he was.
Are you available January 13th for a site visit?
Um, I could be, I guess. I was going to go away for a couple of days for my birthday, but I...
Oh, no! No, no, no!
We'll bring your birthday.
You want to go after that.
He told me, I said, "Don't, you don't take off in this business for that. Take your time off when you're good."
Yeah. My birthday's not, unlucky 13, that's 14.
Thought he was going away for it.
But you can still go away. We could do it the following weekend, or the...
Yeah. Anytime after that, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you want, if you want, we'll try to keep it in January, how's that, rather than February?
Yeah, about the 20th, yeah.
Okay. January 20th?
It's Saturday.
I'm at a time, 20th.
Oh, that's all right. Well, Michelle can come, though.
We have a time.
Michelle is part-time, so no.
How about the 21st, the Sunday?
You can do Sunday, sure.
Mr. Relia, does the 21st work for you?
No.
Okay. Let's do this offline.
Yeah. Yeah.
That may be why Michelle pushed us all the way to February, because...
Yeah, could be. She might, she might already walked this walk, yeah.
You're gone, she's part-time. So we'll try again, otherwise...
It's hard to do it after work, because it's dark.
I mean, the only thing is, if we don't get a site walk done, it's just holding up your, you know, the application review process.
I, I wrote that back to them when they proposed February 20th, so we'll try again for another date offline. I don't really have any comments. You gave us sort of the, you gave us basic elevation, I'll call it, a sketched elevation, and the real issue is, we still just don't have scale figured out correctly. I couldn't quite follow Michelle's formula either, I apologize. If we need to have a meeting on this, if you guys work it out based on the resolutions, we need to have a meeting with the applicant, or Michelle and Joe, that's what we'll do. Otherwise, do we think we can put this on for the next meeting, so we can type it, at least get that done? Can you get a special, SUP, amended special use permit application in by then? Does that sound good, then? It'll be workshopping it still.
I mean, that's fine, we can get it done, but the SUP application needs to have a number, so the number would need to be sorted.
This is true.
Which, which, I mean, maybe just a Zoom meeting to talk through it.
Okay. We'll schedule a Zoom to walk, to walk through this. What days is Michelle working? Random.
Very rare, very, very rare.
Sorry to hear that.
Well, then joking.
So we'll email you...
You'll do it then.
We'll email you to set up a Zoom, the scale?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Joe's your man.
I'm around. He's filling in when I'm not around sometimes, that's basically it. She's retired, and she just helps out when I need someone, so...
Ah, to be...
She came in here because I was in Italy.
Retirement sounds good.
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't want to do a Zoom from Italy, not that you do it.
No, no, it's just, it's, we need to work out scale, because...
Yeah, I agree.
Of course, Victoria's right.
I agree.
This special use permit will say what the final scale is, the percentage, et cetera.
Absolutely. There's no question.
And we do have to, we do have to circulate this to county planning regardless, because it's being on the road, and I think we have to circulate the special use permit, too.
We do.
Correct? Yes. So, okay, we'll, we'll schedule this for a workshop in the future, but we'll all get together by email tomorrow and set up a Zoom.
Okay.
Offer some times for Zooms, okay?
Yeah, meanwhile, I'll contact the DOT engineer again, as Peter suggested, see if he...
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, if they wanted to call me, they know me, or they can call Pete, it's going to be a type 2 action.
Yeah, fine.
There's not going to be any secret...
He's excellent, Joe, you're, I mean...
Okay, it's fine.
Night and day, so, very, 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 very helpful guy.
Okay, that's better than what we had before.
If you call, if you call the permit office down on Violet Avenue, Chuck's old number and Joe's old number, Bill LaRose, L-A-R-O-S-E.
Yeah, I know Bill, but I didn't know he'd taken over.
Great guy.
Okay.
More responsive is what I'm going to say straight out.
Great.
So, okay, I'll be back in touch with you by email. Thank you, guys, for coming in, and Happy New Year.
Thanks, thank you very much. Happy New Year.
The next item on the agenda is also a workshop. This is grounded. This is the town's first cannabis retail dispensary application. It's located at 3665 Albany Post Road, but this has been, well, it was actually most recently, I think, a training for ShopRite.
Correct.
Yes.
So, I'll turn it over to you guys, just make sure, remember to speak into the microphone. And the old Dodge dealership, G Beagle.
Yes. Go way back.
So, we are grounded, partners, my son Frank and I, Richard Barone, Frank Barone. So, in light of the fact that there's a possibility of a moratorium that might go into effect, I know they voted on it, we're going to address that tomorrow, that issue with the town board. But in this case, what we want to do is proceed with this process of getting this site approval, even as just a retail store. If we consider that, and then, from what I understand, get special use permit. Is that possible?
Does this require a special use permit?
So, right now, it does not require a special use permit, because it's just a general commercial facility.
It's a retail facility.
Okay.
But, the moratorium was adopted.
Okay.
So, that was adopted by the state.
Okay.
So, that would prevent the planning board from approving your application as it's been presented.
As a dispensary?
Correct.
Right.
If you are saying you're going to withdraw that application and reapply to sell widgets, that would be a different application.
And so, does that
But, I mean, I don't know if that gets you very far, because you would then, let's say you have an approval to sell widgets, and the board approves it, when you decide you want to sell cannabis, you're going to be subject to whatever law the town adopts, and you just have to come back through this process.
Right. But if we don't go through with this process, and get the site approved, with construction and all that, we're talking, we could be talking six months, who knows?
The process of adopting a new law does take a while. It must, we have Councilman Prusakowski here from the 4th Ward. New laws must be referred to the planning board, and all neighboring municipalities, as well as county planning. Almost have three days to operate. Just making sure at least one of the town board members knows that.
Okay.
So, when they create the law, whether, whoever, the zoning, and the law that would support its adoption, so, they would then circulate that to us, to the county planning board, and to, as I said, to all municipalities that are adjoining. And they have 30 days, so that's whatever law it takes them to create the law and the zoning language, then it would take another 30 days, and then they have to hold a public hearing, close that, and then they would could vote to adopt the law, then it has, it doesn't take place until it's adopted by New York State Department of State, which takes five days? Five days. So, it could be, if they have the law ready to go, that would change, I believe, the location, so it's not just located anywhere in town.
Right.
But if they have a lot of change that pre-done pretty quickly, this could happen in three months or so. What Victoria, I believe, is trying to say is that we can process this, but if we get to, like, we're up to, like, an approval,
Right.
we can't vote to approve it, because there's a moratorium on the use, so what we would need to do is then just sit there and adjourn a public hearing out to some distant future spot, because the way New York State law works is if we close a public hearing, we have 62 days in which to act. So, if we closed a public hearing and still couldn't actually approve it,
Understood.
then you lapse and start all over again, which we don't want to happen.
Yeah.
In addition, I just want to point out, your traffic impact study, you have to actually withdraw this application, because your traffic impact study, which I complimented you on for doing it in advance, and actually hadn't thought about it, but the nature of retail sales for this is a short turnaround, because people are ordering in advance, or getting their stuff in advance. I think if I recall, briefly, the study showed me, it was like every 15 minutes, people are in and out, so that's more analogous to like a convenience retail.
Okay.
But that's also now usually associated with a gas station, too, so it's got different numbers. So, general retail, in other words, would probably not have the same traffic counts you're producing, because it wouldn't have as much turnaround. If I'm going to go buy a pair of pants or a suit, it's going to take me a while to shop and try it on, get it altered, that kind of stuff, so.
So, we need to amend that?
No, 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 I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting you amend it.
I think the options we were talking about are, you mentioned withdrawing, and proceeding with a retail use general. If you want to do that, we can't stop you, but when you come back in for cannabis use, you know, it would be the traffic study, you'd have to, it would be a whole new review, I'm not sure that saves you any time.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to weigh out.
The other option is to proceed with this, and the board can get as far as it can get,
Okay.
and then the board would shelve it for a while, until the town board adopts new regulations, and there's a risk for you proceeding, because, you know, you could spend time and money, and then the town could say, "Well, this is not an appropriate spot," and you might not be able to proceed any further. Or, they could adopt regulations which would allow you to get approval pretty quickly. We don't know.
Yeah.
So, just to go, just to go and add to that, to be clear on the record, that you would be proceed, if you decided to proceed with, you know, the cannabis application, that you'd be proceeding at your own risk.
Understood that.
You know, just in case that that area is not one of the areas zoned for the sale of, you know, cannabis. So, I'm not saying you can't, you know, like, proceed at your own risk, but it just needs to be clear on the record
Yeah, we're aware of that.
based upon a meeting I had earlier today, so. And then, just, and just to add to, you know, changing the application to like a general, some type of a general, like retail, and that's, you know, like, fine, you know, the chairman had mentioned about, you know, there's, depending on the type, like, of retail, you know, that affects, you know, the traffic, like, counts, depending on what type of uses might be in there. But it also going to affect, because down there, I believe you're on septic, down there, you're also on a well down there, so, you know, whatever you're possibly looking at doing, if you change, you know, the, change the operation, depending on the intensity, you know, that might affect, you know, the water and sewer. I don't know if Tim Lynch took a look at the water and sewer for your cannabis application, as the number of employees, or
Right.
you know, or whatever. I mean, I would think that the folks coming in to purchase are going to be there on the short term, and probably won't use facilities, but that's something that the health department would have to, like, determine.
They're in and out of 15 minutes, they're going to have a mighty fast time in the facility.
Yeah, they're in and out of there.
Yeah, so
By the way, it's a very
So, there's things to consider, if you change the application, and then you went through and got that approved, like, the planning board attorney said, if you're going to sell, like, widgets, you know, maybe that's not a high, you know, like, volume thing, but if you're going to sell something else that's a high, like, volume, a lot of people, which you want the business to be successful, that means probably more sewer, more like water.
We want our businesses to be successful in Hyde Park.
So, anyways.
When we met, when Ted and I met first initially, we looked for, what do you call it? Pre-application, application meeting? It's a pretty complete application, I was very impressed. The only thing that he was waiting on was to change some of the architecture, because it kept a flat roof. And so, they came back with that, and I believe Mr. Barone, Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Thought that they needed to sell me on this, and I went, "No, no, 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 I helped start the program we have in retail cannabis sales at Dutchess Community College," which I believe we have some students enrolled in there right now, I hear?
They completed, just, they graduated.
Oh, that's right, those are micro credentials, right. How was it?
It was nice, it was honestly, we learned a lot, the science was best, I think.
Do you know about terpenes now, and all that stuff?
Oh my goodness.
It's, there's a lot more that goes into this sales process than what people think, is what I'm trying to say. So, it's, that's why we started this, and it's, because the licenses have a social equity, you know, factor built into it, it's, there's going to be a lot of people who can make good money off this, which is the reason why we started the program there. So, we're looking to expand that program later on, at any rate. So, no need to sell, we're, I mean, I personally think it's a great use for that area. So, we're just trying to figure out a product. We haven't had moratoria in a long time, usually, when they pass, it stops you from being able to apply.
Well, there's some precedent there, so, that's why we're going to try to address that tomorrow with the town board, because, and they still have the five days, right, to have the state adopt that law? Is that correct?
Whenever it gets filed with New York State Department of State.
We send it with a certified letter, and they send a receipt back.
Okay.
And it normally takes three to five days to get there and be accepted.
So, there's some issue with us being in a position of seeker? Are we there, number one, first?
No, 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 so, the issue is, is that we can do seeker on this, we can do everything on this. Again, when we get to the end, if there's no law that would allow us to approve it, we're then in limbo, as we used to say in the Calipso.
When we spoke at the pre-submission, you spoke of a solar project that had a moratorium put in place.
It was the way the solar moratorium was written, that anyone that had already received a seeker determination could proceed, but that's not the way this
That's not the way this is written.
That's not the way this one was written.
Okay. I remember that, sorry, that's, that's, well, that moratorium was a long time ago, I forgot about that, so. And that was actually because those were not, that was not just for rooftop PV arrays, that was for what they call solar farms, are the good ones. When we first adopted the code, a section of code that dealt with it, we weren't thinking about some things, because what we were doing was trying to help applicants come through, because otherwise you came through public utility, which, that's not a public utility. So, we changed it, so it just needed a certain site plan review, but we forgot that it didn't have normal setbacks, and if you live near a solar array, you want more than sometimes five-foot side yards setback. So, we had to increase those. So, to be fair to people, because we already had ones in the, going through, if we'd done seeker on it, then they could continue, and if they didn't yet, then everything had to be frozen. Bonnie, you're looking at me? Yep?
Yeah, so, I just, because from my own knowledge, there's a chapter in the Towne Hyde Park code, that's the opt-out for cannabis.
It was opted out initially, and then it was opted in, and once you opt in under state law, you can't opt out again.
Okay, so, it looks like the opt-out is there, but you're saying they did opt in at some point?
I believe that the councilman's here, but I believe that was an early action taken two years ago.
It was August 22.
Okay.
So, once you opt in under state law, you cannot opt out, so, this is just, we're now getting our first applications for it.
Okay.
And I'm guessing that the town board thought, okay, if this could go anywhere, we might want to take a look at that.
Okay. I wasn't sure why it was still in the code then, but maybe it needs to come, we may, as a planning board, you might want to recommend that the town consider pulling it out of the code.
I agree.
Yeah.
I can make note of that.
So, unless there's something I missed, in terms of maybe there's another provision that said, and by the way, we've now opted back in.
Yeah, they had the vote.
I'm not sure.
You can proceed with this as it is, that's, it's very simple. You can proceed as it is, but when we hit down the line, and we can take, we could take some
It says it was repealed 8/30/2022 in a note, but it's
It should just be gone, right?
No, I think the consumption is still on the books, which is why it's, consumption is still opted out.
Consumption opt-out is
Consumption, yeah, still opt out.
So, the consumption
The lounge thing, right, sorry.
Okay. Got it, okay.
The language is new for me, consumption. So, you can't eat on premises, or, okay.
And then, there's also a part in the moratorium document, something about a hardship waiver.
That would be, I think that's a
I'm going to recommend, honestly, that you guys consult an attorney if you have questions.
Well, yeah, that's the thing we
Do you think you qualify for a hardship? There's a process with the town board, under which you can apply for that hardship.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have consulted with our attorneys, that have dealt with us throughout this whole process, and, I mean, their initial response was that the moratorium is pretty much illegal for them to be putting in place to halt this whole process, when it comes to the Marijuana Regulation and Tax Association for the state of New York, so, we kind of have a little bit, we just didn't, we don't want to move forward in any kind of legal action, because there's no need for us to, if it's, you know, but we need to protect ourselves at this point.
This board only implements whatever laws are adopted.
Exactly.
So, at this point, this board has no control over the moratorium, or over the zoning.
Exactly. Yeah, and that's why with the planning board, you know, we want to move forward with everything that we have to do.
Then let's just start the review process. I started to say, if this
You know, the moratorium is something else we have to deal with, but as far as planning board goes, you know, we want to do this.
Doing the hardship route, or trying to sue, is going to take a lot longer than them changing the law.
And that's exactly what we don't want to do.
Just so you know.
We're confident the law is going to be
Yeah, we want nothing to do with that.
That's what I was going to say, that's what I think, and plus, just, you guys have owned a business here for a long time, you're
We've been in Hyde Park our whole lives.
Corporate citizens, we'll call it, so, it's not probably the best idea to sue before you go to the town.
Exactly.
We don't want to do that.
That was the whole point about it.
So, we're going to just
Yeah, so we'll proceed here.
Are we still looking for, do we have puzzling, is there something puzzling over there?
Bonnie, she was looking at the repeal, the repeal.
Okay. So, anyway, so we can start, so do you want to, do you, this is
Yes, that's everything.
You want to go up there?
Something?
Well, yeah, so you would normally do a presentation, like, the same thing we did when we were at the desk.
If you could bring the microphone with you.
The microphone with you, right.
Thanks.
So, as everyone knows the site, it's about 6,300 square foot building that exists now. We're going to tear out about 2,300 in the back, it's going to be left with 4,000 or so square feet, with a new addition on the back of the existing block building that's there. We're going to face it with board and batten vertically, and planks going horizontally in the design that's shown in the sketch, someplace here. And that's, the colors are going to be black and brown, and we will have a sample of those. Darker than that a little bit, this is a little shaded differently. And that's kind of the configuration we're going to have with the peaks roofs that we talked about in our earlier meetings. And as far as the lot goes again, and I'll go through that quickly, where the back then becomes all of our parking area, we're going to be closing off the north entrance, and this will be all green area, here in front on Route 9, as well as here.
You've just resolved one of the biggest issues with that site.
Big issue. And everything here is in the back, as far as parking. There'll be a walkway that goes around the whole building, that goes to the front.
There's a walkway around the front to come in, we'll have them exit this way to the back. We have a slight, small loading area right here for delivery jars, sorry.
So, small, small loading zone in the back right here, accessible to the parking lot. Like I was saying, sidewalk all the way around for people entering, and if anybody needs to, you know, wait in a small line, they'll be lined up on our sidewalk. When they come out, it's the same doorway, they come out the exit, go around the back into the back parking lot. We're, yep, this is one way in and one way out. Dumpsters were over here, we were getting rid of dumpsters, just going to have some rollaways right inside there in our fenced-in area.
That's what you did with it.
Yeah, we don't need that much.
I didn't think so, because it was in an awkward location before, too.
Exactly. Snow, push down this way.
Where are the rollaways going?
This is the rain garden right here, with all the green area.
The site of septic is actually here, we're going to dig some holes as soon as we get some action going there with the demo, and see what we got as far as, the tank is good, we checked that already through M&amp;H, and we have that report, and we just may have to change the lines, there's two lines coming out, and I think we just have to reroute them, but again, this is all green area, as well. So, from the way, it's going to look really pretty, as far as our illumination around the building, there'll be all down lighting, from what I understand, right? And from the, that's our illumination, I guess it zeroes out the way it's supposed to, right? With lumens and whatever they call those.
Foot candles.
Yeah, foot candles. So, again, demos, we're taking out the back, and then we go into the floor plan. What we're left with is the entrance in the front here, Route 9. There's a wall here for security that's required, because the public cannot see any product from any window from the road. So, we have to disguise here with a wall, because we're putting three windows in the front, but this wall here is going to be a closed, solid wall, so that you can't see in, because this is our display area. So, as you come around the security, and it's pretty stringent mandated security by the state and office of cannabis management, we'll come here into the display area, and you'll have different tables of product to be viewed. We'll have budtenders, they call them, coming around and taking orders, and we'll also have a large counter area of budtenders.
Budtenders?
Budtenders, bartenders, budtenders, that's what they call them. They'll be behind the desk here, taking orders and finalizing. That'll also be for people that have pre-orders, so that'll all come out. And then the exit out here is a security door that separates the space, and that's a requirement also by OCM. In the space, we're going to have, with the new addition, an area for our employees to enter in the back. There's a hallway here with two offices, this becomes a vault, another requirement by the state, where a product has to be locked, monitored, entered only by secure methods, and only the people that can go in there. So, that's a secure part of the building, and it comes around and gives products through a window to the budtenders that are running here to fill orders. That's kind of the flow in a short minute. And again, they come out, and usually it's about a 15-minute stay into the store, and they're in and out with their product, no consumption, and they go home. And Frank, you have anything to add?
Right. I mean, we've been working on this for a while, almost, it'll be about a year. We're realistically the only ones who actually have a license right now, in, you know, in Dutchess County, definitely in Hyde Park. Everybody else has been, you know, questionable. They're in the general application, they're hoping to get a license, but nobody has any approvals yet. So, you know, we've worked hard, Hyde Park is where we've always been from, so, we figured it's the best place to bring it.
Is the, can you operate, say the moratorium was over, and we approved, and you got in there, could you operate right now with your license, or are you
Yes, yes.
So, you're not subject to the moratorium?
So, ours, ours is location approved back in
Oh, state?
No, well before that. This was, I think in June or July, we got that location approved, because we started hunting for real estate. We chose that one, the OCM approved us, then we had to move forward with everything for, you know, the town and everything. Then we got put in the lawsuit, the state was under the injunction. We held our
I'm sorry, injunction, I'm sorry, I'm in injunction.
Yeah, it was under the injunction. So, we held our location through that, even once it was lifted, then they started reprocessing all the ones who were under our program, which was the card program. And we held on to our location approval, and as of right now, I mean, we're waiting, the OCM is just waiting to go and do a site visit, that we're ready to go. Obviously, we have to do our construction still, so we're, they're just, the compliance team at OCM is just waiting on us for, to be ready.
Wow.
Okay.
With our construction, they'd walk in, give us our sticker, and out the door we go.
Anything else you'd like to add for this presentation to the board, as part of the presentation? I mean, could you go over traffic circulation again, just so everybody can see?
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, in regards to that, Michael, could you just explain deliveries? I mean, I don't
That's what I wanted you to
I don't know what kind of, like, delivery vehicles, because, you know, you've got, you've got, you know, the parking that's right up against, you know, the curb, and, you know, usually there's like an access way to get to, you know, your, like, loading area, and again, I don't know anything about this, like, business, I don't think you're going to get big box trucks. Maybe just talk about the type, like, of vehicles, and then how, I mean, do they just park there? It's a short term, then how do they get in and out? Because
Sure, you're saying delivery?
Yeah, whatever
From suppliers?
Yeah.
Suppliers, most of the time, are coming in a regular compact car. At the most, they're coming in, you know, a 12-passenger van. They pull in, we're talking maybe a few boxes at a time, and there's a couple hundred different cultivators, processors that are delivering, so the batches are small that we're getting. Obviously, we don't know the volume just yet, because we're still waiting, and, but, as far as loading, you know, we have the relationships with these people, it's a one person that's coming to do a delivery. They're just going to pull into, they're going to pull into the back,
Yep.
you know, park right here, and walk right in, with their, whatever product it is. Or, I'm coming out and getting
And there's plenty of room for them to turn around.
And there's plenty of room for them, they're going to back out and turn around, and we made it, how would, we did so the, so like a plow could come in, and it has enough space for them to go in and out, or if somebody's coming in, they back into a space, they collapse.
Because we don't want any larger, I mean, again, I know it's not a real large vehicle, but we don't want anybody backing out onto, you know, the street in order to
Correct.
So, they have to be able to, whatever, like, vehicles are going to service your, like, facility, they need to be able to turn around inside.
Correct, and we discussed that with Tim, the engineer, about, you know, making sure it was the right size, that they could do that. And that's why we ended up going with this one parking lot setup, instead of keeping it going around.
So, Pete, you'll verify that?
Yeah.
And just, for everyone's general edification, so when New York passed its legalization laws, in Massachusetts, you can grow it, process it, wholesale it, retail it. So, it's vertically integrated, because you can do all or just one. In New York, you are not allowed to do that. The grower can't, it just goes through a different cycle, which is why it's going to be smaller deliveries here.
You can do that now, in New York, so that is coming, and I believe that you, that the town has gotten some notifications for some people trying to do that. So, that's the micro-business license, so anybody applying with a micro-business license to you, that's what they're trying to do. They're going to grow on their property, they're going to process on their property, and then they can retail and sell to us, and anybody else has a delivery.
But only their
But only their product, correct.
Got it, that actually
Whereas, as retail, as retail only, we can, you know, we retail for all the products and all the cultivators.
So, when I, as part of figuring out the course of education at DCC, we did several visits to Massachusetts to see. So, those, the vertically oriented, integrated businesses there have big trucks to deliver.
Yeah.
And they're producing edibles, and not just gummies, they have macarons, and sodas, and you name it.
Yep.
So, but this would be a micro-use, that's
That would be a micro-business, yes.
So, you can't, you wouldn't really be sending out big trucks from there, that's what Pete's concerned is.
Most of the ones that I've seen, and being license holders, the cultivators are already, they come, they come to my house, they bring samples, and how they're doing their deliveries around the area is with like a 12-passenger van, or really, realistically, a full-size sedan, a compact car, I haven't seen anything bigger than that.
They have to have, they have to be a little discreet, actually.
Yeah, it has to look basically like nothing, you know, it has to look just like a normal person driving around.
Can't have a, can't have a weed
No, you can't. And the same goes for our delivery operations, so with our license, we have a delivery portion that we're also allowed to deliver. So, you know, one, two cars, we can pack them up and send them out as well for deliveries. We have a delivery plan as well, when it comes to that, and, you know, things like that. But as far as the building, you know, we just closed on it on December 19th. So, the building is ours, and now here we are with this. So, you know, we've put a lot into this, and
As I said, most people, when I have a pre-application meeting, are just sort of throwing things around ideas. You came up with sort of a fully engineered plan, that that's all I could think of, is really just the fact that the architecture
Yeah, in this business, it's, the first mover is huge, and right now, there's still none open in Hudson Valley. And definitely not in Hyde Park, and not in Poughkeepsie.
None legally open.
None legally open, correct. Actually, the, there's, the one in, the one near ShopRite, that cigar shop, they're selling illicitly. Flight smokes, I think they're called, and there's another one in Pleasant Valley that's also selling illicitly.
Wait, we don't have to keep mentioning the sites, that wasn't my intention.
It's good for everyone to know.
There's a few others I can name for you that I've been told about. But it's also, there's a lot of enforcement going on.
No, there isn't. And we hope that as they, as we come in, as, you know, if our location is, moves forward and we're about to get to an opening, then OCM comes in and they do a search of the area, and they crack down a little bit harder.
Well, that's...
Which they will.
That's what I was told in other areas, that everyone's saying, "We're waiting for the state to do the enforcement," and the state's not enforcing quite yet, but they're going to in the future. So, that comports with that. Okay. Let's start over with our consultants. Ms. Franson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thank you for the presentation. I guess at this point, we're just gonna review it as if it's general retail under the existing, and, no, we're not going to...
No, retail cannabis.
We're viewing it as retail cannabis.
Right, but in other words, the sta, there's no new standards or anything, so we just go with whatever the zoning is now.
The only thing that would change, the reason why we're reviewing it that way is because when you read their traffic study, it's based on it being cannabis, basically. Particularly because the pre-orders, people can get in there in two minutes if there's no line. It's fast.
Literally.
Picking up pizza.
Yeah. So, it's fast, and that's why, because it generates a higher traffic count than what regular retail would.
Right.
I said, it's sort of like convenience for retail, but this is gonna be, this is a convenient story in many ways. You deliver.
It's very convenient.
It's like a deli.
Yeah.
Right?
Very upscale deli.
Yes, exactly.
And you leave feeling full in a different way. So, yes, we're gonna review it. Our code would be general commercial.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I just wanted, what are we going to for now?
In other words, in terms of impact, we're looking at safer traffic.
General commercial, but we should acknowledge that we don't have experience, you know, with this use.
And the prior use was auto sales and auto repair, which is gonna have, which had very different traffic counts as well. This also, because it has less employees, like lots less, they don't need as many parking spaces as they have technically, but because this is a high-volume business, they do need more as well. So, there's a lot that, like I said, they put a lot into it. I was pretty...
Yeah, I was pleased.
Perusing, and there is a lot to review, so...
We're ready. Yeah, I should add, one of the reasons why everyone's looking at you blankly is, this just sort of came to our, got put on the...
Right, calendar.
Agenda yesterday. So, I'm familiar with it, and I already looked at the new application myself, because I was like, "What do they do differently?" But nobody else has seen it except for me and Tad, I guess, so far. So, anyway. Bonnie will still need to review, and she's been under pressure by another, from another applicant, great pressure, to resolve Part III in Seeker, et cetera. So, at any rate. Tad, you any comments?
No.
Pete?
The only other thing is, we typically, when we have a change of use come into a building, we typically will refer to the Dutchess County Health Department, especially if it has individual sewer and individual well, just so that they can take, like, a look at it and, you know, either say, "Okay, you know, the system they have there now is fine." You know, like, for instance, so I would suggest that Tim probably reach out to them, or you did?
We already have.
Okay, good.
I think you mentioned that they're gonna drill a couple of holes, once they get through...
Okay, good. I just didn't, I just didn't, I just didn't want you to...
And you may need two new lines, I think you said, two new lines?
Two new lines.
Okay, good, good. Yep, that's it.
And just for the record, so everybody remembers, we have a, we have a formal request from Jason T., the Department of Health, that if there's a change of use in a building, that we refer to them no matter what, just so everybody remembers that. Ms. Paudaro, any comments?
To me, this appears to be a Type II action, reuse of an existing commercial facility. We can prepare a resolution for the next meeting.
And it's reducing the footprint as well.
It's reducing the footprint. We should discuss, if you want to circulate to any agencies.
Courtesy.
Courtesy to DOH, DOT, the Fire Department, potentially.
DOT may have some, I forget how, the access that you're gonna close, I forget, that's pretty close to the intersection, right?
Yes.
Because I don't remember how far back...
There was always an issue with...
I don't know how far back DOT has, like, say, on...
Usually, I thought it was 50 feet?
They've claimed to be 50 feet, 50 yards, and 150 feet.
I mean, we could, I mean, look, I mean, they're gonna go close it if you want. I mean, it's gonna be better. I mean, so...
Well, remember, right now, in the front, they're parking on DOT property.
Yeah, right.
They use the same space.
Oh, actually, 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 like, that's the other thing. Thank you, because I was looking at the plan today. So, there's that existing asphalt in the front that's...
Correct.
You're taking that out, that's over the property line?
Yes, yes. And there's that, that...
Oh, that's right, because you're making the whole front area green. Never mind.
There's something we have to address with DOT there because we're paying a rent for that space. So, that has to be abolished somehow, or...
Yeah, you'll have to deal with them on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you quit paying rent, tell them to start mowing it.
That's right, who will mow it?
I'm just sort of offering up a good trade, I think, because they don't, their maintenance funds are lower and lower each year with the state budget. And I know you don't want it to look sloppy in the front, so...
It'll never look nice.
At any rate, any other comments besides typing the action at some point in the future?
Fire Department, DOT, DOH, anyone else need to look at this?
Well, county planning, 239, now.
Right, right. I think that's it, though.
Carol's hot dogs?
Well, yeah, they'll need to be prepared for the extra snacks.
Never around. She may wanna change her location.
I'll put it right in front.
Let me touch my right. Vice Chair, any comments? You might have had a chance to read this. I know it got put on quickly.
It did get put on quickly, but I saw some materials came through.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. And I was, the first thing that struck me was, you have read our code and have done, like, your homework, and that very rarely happens. So, I just wanted to thank you. Again, you're, you're good citizens, and I get it, you've been doing your homework for a long time on this. But I'm, like, excited because I think this is the, this is a perfect use of that old building that's just been sitting there for so long. And it's exciting, and I love that you're closing out that front, you're getting rid of a problem. It's...
That was huge.
Yeah. I mean, and, you know, whether or not people approve of what you're selling, it's like, if it's legal and, and it brings business to Hyde Park, then, thank you. Appreciate all the time that you've been, you've spent on this. I have never written an application that just had, "And here's the traffic, and here's..."
Well, I do want to point out that one of their consultants is Tim Lynch, and his father, Brad Lynch, worked on the original comprehensive plan and helped with the code.
He was on the planning board, wasn't he?
And helped with the code, yes. So, he had a reason to say, "Let's make it, apply to the code," because when he first sent me, I said, "You're getting rid of all the parking in the front." I had to, like, sit down, I had a fainting spell, so, because that's one of the biggest things we fight on with people.
Yeah, that was Tim's idea.
But it's gonna look better.
It's gonna look fabulous.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a road sign also, at the top.
I'm not sure the applicant, you also have a lighting plan and an elevation plan? You're changing the way the building looks?
Yes.
Yeah, they're taking off part of the building.
Did you go through that for the board?
Pardon me?
Were those presented to the board?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, you guys were busy researching over there. Now I remember. You weren't sleeping, okay.
We're not sleeping. So, the front peaks on the building, they're, for us, it's meant to look like mountains to go with our theme. And the back that we are taking off is basically the mechanic bay that's back there right now. And we're still extending the two, the two corners of the building a little bit to make our vault bigger and, you know, a little more office space.
So, it's, it's, it's quite an improvement. That's why I said when I met with Chad, I walked away going, "Wow, let's get this in." So, but there are other concerns, obviously, by the town board. Mr. Waters, comments?
Yeah, I guess the only thing was the, you know, the, I think it's like a facade in the front for the architectural, on the roofs. That's, that's, you know, because visually, I think, southbound on Route 9, you'll see, you'll just see that.
There will be a little overhang.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's about a foot on the, on the larger peaks, overhang, and then about two and a half feet or so on the small center overhang, with a couple of angles.
I mean, it's an improvement to what the site, obviously, it is, and it will be much improved by putting the lawn in and that.
The green area is gonna be nice. Yeah. You see that the middle peak, then...
Further than the two on the side. Yeah, protrudes out, yep.
Correct.
It's our mountain, so...
By the way, in sort of relation to what Rob is saying, I can already tell you that county planning will tell us that this is gonna look like the false fronts in the Western movies.
Carson City.
Yeah.
See, we thought, I thought about it as well.
We get that comment every time.
There's actually a lot, so I went past a, a newer Dollar Tree in Asopis, and if you look at that, they have something exactly like that.
That's Asopis' code, not ours.
I know. I'm just saying, the design, it doesn't look like...
I'm telling you what county planning is going to say. Heather's been here as long as we have, reviewing Hyde Park. I could guarantee, I know what she's gonna say. Why don't you extend the roofline the whole way, make it a real peak? I'm just letting you know you're gonna hear that at some point.
Is it more than 100 feet?
It's 60 feet.
60?
No, it's the fact that they would keep, so, but we make, we make, because the code includes new construction shouldn't have a flat roof, but it says you can disguise it. That's why I pointed out to you, because essentially, they're redoing the roof because they're taking off part of the building. So...
There will be an angle from the front to the back.
Angle down.
Angle down to the back.
It's sloped. It's not, it's not flat either, in other words. I promise, I always say that, I try to get everything that I think that might be a road bump or something, sticking point, and tell them in advance. And all I saw was the architecture on this one. That was about it. They already, they already done their lighting plan. So, any other comments?
That was, that's, that's my, you know, that was my big thing, that the, you know, the false front.
Yeah, right.
So...
We think it'll be aesthetically pleasing. We believe so.
We know so.
Yeah.
It's better than what's there.
I mean, we could leave the nice blue that's there.
Will it help have a side elevation, so we can see?
It would help, it would help to have all sides elevations with the measurements too, you know, so...
Yeah. In color, like that, you mean?
No, not, not in color, just the architectural...
Yeah, they have the black and white.
They showed them already. That's, you can see, the third one to the right and the first one are the ones that look like Carson City, as you call it.
Yeah.
You see?
Looking at it from the side.
It looks...
There's no concerns with wind?
It's gotta be built correctly, I guess.
I just look at it, it looks like a sail, almost.
Ms. LeVonway generally tells, suggests that we leave, just leave it off, because she thinks it looks like it's a gaudy piece of jewelry up top.
Really?
When you're gonna slap, slip a roof like that? I'm just saying, it's what she said. If you remember, this was the credit union.
I remember.
Yeah.
I just, as weird as it is, I, multiple Dollar Trees, I have been seeing this on, and it doesn't look as fake as I even thought it was going to look more like a false roof, but it doesn't. It, if, as long as it's wide enough.
Yeah.
Depends on how it's done.
And how it's built, exactly. It really depends on how it's built.
So, I'm just gonna read from the code, because it was amended a few years ago for flat roofs. Flat roofs are inconsistent with the traditional building character of the town, are not permitted, except when allowed by the planning board within the town core zoning district, in accordance with Town Core Design and Development Standards.
Look at two.
But then it says, "Low-slope roofs utilizing parapets, cornices, and false fronts are encouraged within a landing, hamlet, core, or business district."
This is a business district.
That doesn't make, yeah. So, this would be a false front, so...
Yep, conforms with code.
And it's just encouraged, correct?
Well, otherwise, they're not allowed.
So, we'll take the encouragement.
Yes.
Is there still a slope somewhere in the back?
Can you, if you look on the...
Okay.
It's probably what, 3%, 2%? The engineer may know more than about that. Pete, do you know what the slope would be? 2% pitch, maybe? The building, when you look to the side, there's a sloping roof?
The pitch on a, on a semi-flat, it's probably 1 to 2. It just has to have water to drain, that's all.
Right. Well, it'll be built up on the parapet, because that's the parapet in there, on those two sides. And then everything's gonna slope to the back.
Right, right, right.
Some scuppers are gonna take out the water.
So, that shows, that doesn't show the parapet, or it is showing the parapet.
Because you can't see inside, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Because a parapet would make, almost make that level.
And, and that angle's gonna be built up on top of that parapet to go straight back.
Oh, I actually, it's, it's, it's added, it's additive, not inset.
Because it is level now. It is level now, correct.
Yeah, the way they usually do parapets, it's inset, the roof.
Yes. And that's what it is.
This is now applied to the top.
Okay.
Just the facade in the front, correct. Yes. That'll be applied to the top.
We're glad to have you, and I had no idea what you were talking about just now, the parapet, the way it's flitering.
Don't try, don't try.
Wall on the top, so you don't go over.
Right over the head, you're exactly right, right over the head. So, okay. Mr. Pete?
The Rite Aid drugstore in East Park.
East Park.
That's designed the same way. It's got, you know, the facade around it, the flat roof.
Hold code.
I know, but if somebody wants to look at it, that's what you're gonna see. And when they became before us, we, because they had it completely flat.
It was a big box, yeah.
I remember, I remember, Mickey Camp is the chair of the 9G Quirter Committee, talking to you guys over and over about it.
Yeah, yeah. And then they came in two weeks later with this design, which it did pass at that time. So, I like the look of it. It's...
We like it.
Yeah. We did, we originally brought it to you, it was flat.
Right.
And, you know, we liked it, and you made the recommendation, and I really do think it came out very nice. I think it's gonna look awesome.
Try.
So, anything else, Tom?
No, that's it, yeah.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, of course.
Your demashing part of the building, was that to stay within code, or you just don't need that size building?
More to, to establish parking in the back. We didn't need all that space. That space in the back is really just three walls and a roof, because it was an attachment to the original block building, and that's a metal frame building. So, that's, that's what we're taking down, that metal framing.
That was added to the front?
It was originally auto sales, it was added on for auto repair.
It was a repair shop in the back there.
Okay. And that you just found you don't need, so you're gonna...
We were going to use it at first, but then to make the site look...
Better, and do the parking.
Tim suggested the parking in the back and removing a little bit, so...
Okay.
We just thought it would, it gave better curve looking that way as well.
Okay, thank you.
County planning loves that, parking in the back.
Parking in the back.
So, I don't, did I see a sign, the freestanding sign included with the site plan package?
It is. That's freestanding sign, which will be right here. Freestanding sign right here, which will be right here. It actually, this has to change just a little bit, because it's gonna say grounded, but our, one of our taglines is a Hudson Valley Cannabis Store, so that's gonna be in smaller font underneath the word grounded.
And is that going to be lit?
Just from underneath.
That's what, and you're gonna uplight?
And this will be, the grounded and Hudson Valley Cannabis Store will be the same green that's in our logo.
I would ask, did you consider not uplighting it?
We could take that recommendation.
First of all, I'm thinking of all the traffic through there. And as you drive around town, some of the uplights, they get knocked. And next thing you know, you've got this light shining at traffic.
True.
And you know, we don't need that in that section of.
If you're bringing electricity.
Put a roof over the top, put little lights.
There's also a way.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know who your sign fabricator is, but they can, they can explain it. And in Hyde Park, downlit is preferred.
Downlit is preferred?
Well, it's, no, but it's also what's the industry standard these days. And we have Kate here from, who's a sign fabricator herself. The industry standard is those halo letters so that there's like a glow behind the letters that sells at night. Yeah. Because that reduces glare and it kind of makes things pop up from people's eyes.
Oh, are we allowed to do that?
Oh, yes.
Look at the, look at the bell field, right?
Then yes, that is probably exactly what we would do.
We changed the code a long time ago for that.
Yes. That is likely what, exactly what we do.
It's actually Victoria and I who worked on that code to make it updated.
And then the other one is right here. Yeah. Going up the side angle right there.
The sign dimensions might not, they should work with TAD to make sure they meet code. I'm not sure the letters are right at this point.
Yes, it's a, I believe it is a tiny bit bigger than what the code suggests.
Requires.
Requires. So.
We like you tried to do that, though, slip it in.
But you can make.
He's gonna say encourage.
Yes.
Freestanding signs need a variance.
That's it, yes.
On the wall sign, the planning board can relax based on distance from man.
That's right.
Thank you.
We'll make it right.
The dimensions for the one on the building? Gotcha.
All of them.
All signs have the letters, the letter size, we need the dimensions for those. You need to, yep, and.
Yeah, that one. Yeah, the road one has dimensions.
So in other words, if the letters are greater than ten, we can't make that, we can't change that. That would have to be a variance in the zoning board.
Got it.
Does that mean the whole G?
Yep.
And the D?
The D goes up and the G goes down.
Got it.
The box is up and, yes, sorry.
Do we have time to go for a variance?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if they can grip one, to be honest. I'm not sure.
We just have to conclude seeker on those.
That's not approval.
Well, a variance is an approval. I'm not sure. They would have to confer with the zoning board on whether it's bound by the moratorium.
Okay.
But we're gonna call type two anyways.
We can make them the size you want.
It's not we want.
No.
The size that it needs to be.
It'll be code.
The code.
Yeah. Because that's all we do is enforce the code, I promise. And one of the reasons why Anne was saying what she was saying is new construction is supposed to have parking in the rear building to be in the front, or at least parking to the rear of the front line of the building. So it could be on the side. But we don't, haven't had a lot of new construction, to be honest with you here, the last decade or so, we've had redevelopment of existing structures, which is why I think Hyde Park looks nice. Even when you guys did the restaurant, you did, there was some sort of structure there that sold curios or fireworks or something. I can't, it's been so long, I can't remember it. But it's, we've been fortunate that we've seen the investment in the redevelopment. But we have had some new buildings. It's just we haven't had that many. So and back when all the buildings were put back in the back and you had parking in the front so you could look like you were prosperous. So at any rate, well, for a highway town like ours. But at any rate, I don't have really any other comments myself. Do you want to put this on for two weeks to type it?
Yep.
And.
Type, prefer to county, prefer out courtesy referrals.
And do you, do you, do you want us to set it, should we set a public hearing now? Or do you want, do you want them, us to wait for them to talk?
I think we should wait because.
Talk to the town board before we start doing all that. Because that's when you start incurring expenses from regular meetings. Because we have to open and reopen, adjourn to the ones in the future.
We'll speak to them.
Okay.
See where they lay.
What the next steps are. Yeah. So they haven't approached you, right? About rewriting anything?
Literally.
Just now.
Just now, when I came.
That's why I redirected her in there.
I think I know how to solve what their issue is and pretty easily. I told Victoria, I'm pretty sure. But also, I'll talk to you if you want. But that's not the writing of it. You'd still have to do all of that. But I think there's a way to do it pretty easily.
I guess the question is the where.
Well, that's how I think I know. I know where they think they want them and I know how to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, talk to them.
Seventeenth of the next meeting.
Yes, we can at least type the action, get that going. And then we'll kind of just slow the process until we know more from you. And you can tell us that night what you learned if you want to. Or you can communicate to us in advance.
This is the name of this.
All right?
Perfect, perfect.
We want to say once again, thank you for considering investing in our community in Hyde Park. It's one more, deciding to see another empty building turn into something nicer looking and to have some activity and activation and people coming in, as Anne said, doing business in Hyde Park.
And it's the entry, entranceway into Hyde Park, you know. And so nice to get that building with something in it.
Yeah. So in the meantime, Happy New Year. Good to see you guys again.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Was the last time we saw you before the planning board, when you were changing something?
Yeah, I think they re-clad, remember, you put the, their new face on the other.
That was old.
That's a long time ago.
That's a long time ago.
I saw you before.
We were here.
Yeah, that's right. Don was here when you got the first building approved. Right. I think even Pompey might have been on the planning board back then.
I think he was.
It's been a long time. We're all old. We're all old. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
All right.
Next time, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to establish our vice chairs. I'm introducing Resolution 24-A, January 3, 2024, Resigning Planning Board Vice Chair Persons for the year 2024. Now therefore be resolved that Ann Dexter and Chris Oliver be designated the vice chair persons of the planning board authorized to conduct meetings of the planning board and decide final plots, site plans, and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the planning board in the absence of the chairperson. Thank
you, a second.
So moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And I think that's it, right? Making a motion to adjourn. Oops. Before I do that, before I go, so Mr. Zerrin is still apparently trying to make sure that he can get the site plan as fast as possible. So he actually called me to say that he could argue that we could do site plan approval and seeker in the same night.
Sure.
I told him no, that we haven't heard back from county planning. So here's the time for me to say that county planning had a request to add two weeks because.
They haven't submitted the application.
We don't have the final subdivision application either.
Believe me, I know. I'm just letting you know, I'm passing this on because I'm the one who gets harangued all the time. So.
I also received a call.
Yes, I know.
Today, yesterday, Saturday.
Yep. So at any rate, I did, because I don't, you guys weren't copied on it, but we had, I'm guessing like 16 shippo emails because they kept requesting additional documentation. And these things don't tell me what they submit. They just tell you that it's been submitted. So we also had the expanded habitat assessment. So at any rate, because we kept getting so many things so quickly, we updated or tried to update Ms. Lefon with all the new material. So she asked for two more weeks and we said yes. I did mention this to Victoria. One of the things Ms. Lefon was, or Heather was commenting on was the fact that the lighting plan only shows foot candles from the exterior lights. Her argument, and Bonnie, this is really kind of a new too, is her argument was that we should ask for foot candles from, because there's so much glazing, those big sort of buildings that look like a big TV from the 50s or something, you know, those when the lights are on. I mean, if you have, if you have enough money, there's ways to, and it becomes opaque or milky. But the size of those, those windows is like the back wall over there. So and I don't know if they're gonna have curtains or draperies. And I said, well, you're talking at night and surely people who are in one of those big things with those big windows would like do curtains or blinds or something. And she said, you can't count on that.
No.
We have never, ever looked at interior lighting as a seeker impact for what the foot candles are on the outside. We just, we did look at what the hotel's gonna look like at night. I've never heard of this before. So put it in your heads to think about. But this is probably gonna be one of her comments is she thinks that for seeker purposes, because it's on the river and the SASS, that we should also look at the impact of lights at night during leaf off seasons. So.
I wonder if the windows, the intent for the windows to be tinted in some way.
They're, they're showing in the elevations that you can, you know, hey, I can see hair, individual strands. So.
I think those are like rendering or something.
Yeah, but you need to understand that in Hyde Park, that mid-century modern with the big glass is, was all the rage. You drive around, they're all over the place.
I have two down by me.
And they were just spray glass.
And they're on the river.
And they're like that because people inside get the beautiful views.
Yes, of course.
So it's, as I said, I've never thought about that as a potential seeker impact. In addition, Sinek Hudson has the 100-foot conservation easement where they could maybe get permission from Sinek Hudson to limb up and thin them out. I don't know. But that's also relying on that being a block. She also indicated, which, and she's right. And I'm not saying that she's wrong on this one. I'm just, I wanted us to think about this. Because we also, we do site plan waivers all the time. The Freibman's House, TAD, with all the glazing, at night, that looks like a nuclear plant if you're on the river. So if we're gonna do one, we have to start doing it for everybody.
Well, and I think also recognize that there's some evidence now that spring peepers will not peep if there's too much ambient light. And we're looking at protecting a small wetland area that likely has spring peepers, you know, can be an impact other than visual.
But it's a significant impact. This is supposed to be a community-wide impact for seeker purposes.
Peepers won't breathe if they're not peeping.
In that one wetland area, but we have other areas around. Yes.
So we're just gonna say no?
This is like.
But wait, the windows are going to the Hudson, not to the.
It's ambient light that's created.
The windows, by the way, that go to the Hudson are only the ones that are down below on the ride. All the other ones that we're talking about are mostly interior to the site. And I mean, that's been my sort of comment each time is that you're gonna be looking at each other. But.
I'm gonna put this research question on Michael and Kate.
She's emailing him now, so he's not gonna sleep.
No.
Yes, Bonnie, where?
No, I mean, I would think that they'd wanna deal with interior in the evening anyway because some of those villas are really close to each other.
That's why I didn't say all.
So I could, I could imagine the fronts and the sides are gonna be more protected, but they probably will be able to see out, you know, as you had said, because you wanna see out. But they may just inherit in their design, wanna kind of limit some of this because they have trails all over the place.
When you look at the landscape, you look at the landscape and the landscaping is designed to, once it's matured, to provide privacy in between. But this is not, this is the Northeast where we have a long, we have a short growing season. So the landscaping will take probably decades to mature.
Yes.
That's another thing that Heather talked to me about was, well, when you're doing the visual analysis that they redid sort of, she said, it's still showing all the trees in there. Didn't take out the trees in the center. And I said, Bonnie said the same thing. And I said, but what would we do to mitigate that? She said, what do you mean? I said, the landscaping that they add back in is supposed to mitigate what they're taking out. Maybe they'll be taking out more. And I said, Heather, this is raw land. You're gonna have to remove some trees. I said, I've been trying to guide the planning board for these many years, that if the town board has said commercial uses are allowed there, that you're balancing out, you have to say that that's where the landscaping has to come out then, because you can't protect everything green. But that's why you asked them to do more heavy landscaping section. So and she was right. It will take 30 years before those trees are back up tall enough to kind of, you know, disguise it.
I think the reality with that particular site is they do have their villas almost like in pods because between the pre-contact areas, Sinek Hudson, Winnicke, the wetlands, you know, it's not like boom, all of it's going to be clear cut. So there are these breaks. And then there'll be new landscaping. So, you know, to what extent it would be impactful, I don't know that it's going to be that impactful.
The other thing I said is if you're looking, wanna be looking at visual impacts, it can't be to the house across the way. That is not, you can look at it, but that is not a seeker impact because that is minor. That is teeny. So it would need to be almost from a public viewing station. 9W over there does not have any public park. It has no place which you'd be looking right over at this site. The closest I can think of would be the walkway over the Hudson. We looked at it the last time from the, and you can't, it's too far away to see much. You can't even see the CIA very well from there. And that's got much higher. Remember, the original hotel plan was five stories? This is now everything is under 35 feet, as I told Heather. She said, well, if you're looking, you're still gonna see no trees for a while.
Yeah. And I mean, think of it cumulatively. Most of the CIA property is.
It's cleared out.
It's cleared out, but along the river, you know, there is that buffering. And then once you get to FDR, you know, you still have green and buffering and it's a big parcel. So if you think, I think more cumulatively.
You're gonna have a Sinek Hudson buffering.
You're gonna have this, this one little area, but if you consider it in the broader context of the river, then I don't know that it, again, I think it's a matter of the planning board determining whether it's significant. But I don't think you've been concerned with that because of its scale.
And natural colors that they're required to use.
Yeah.
Also with the conservation easement. And the fact that it's buffered on this side by a berm on the Route 9 side, I should say. So I mean, I'm looking always for visual impacts for, you know, where, it doesn't have to necessarily be people would gather, but where, you know, the public could see, take a look at this easily as opposed to just one or two houses. And we also have a sign off from the National Park Service saying there'll be no visual impacts to the historic property next door. So and I assume that the CIA doesn't care because it's their land and it's their property. So it's, at any rate, I'm just anticipating some of the comments may be coming back. Because Heather did ask me if we were close to seeker and I said, they want us to be. Like they want us to do it tomorrow night. This was yesterday. So at any rate, Bonnie, I may have Heather, if she has more questions, I may recall you, just so you know, because some of the, I was in the car when she called me. I said, wait, I can't answer any of this unless I have the plans in front of me. So at any rate, if you see it on the agenda in yellow, it says, please do a deep dive because Mr. Zerrin was like, are we gonna keep hearing new things every two weeks about the site plan now?
Well, let me just add to, and you know, Michael, I mentioned to you earlier, earlier tonight, and, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna consider conditional site plan approval. I mean, they need to get further along with all these outside like agencies. I mean, these plans are, these plans are okay, but I mean, they're gonna go drastically like change as they go through with the DOT, with the county health department, with the water authority. And then, you know.
They've gotta run a deceleration lane.
I mean, they gotta get, you know, and we wanna be, you know, the town wants to be somewhat involved with the DOT as far as the traffic control plan for these, for the construction access, blah, blah, blah.
That's something we're viewed by.
They have a heart, they're looking for approval by February 21st.
Well, that's too bad. I mean, what, what is, what is the big deal? I mean, did it have some deadline?
It's a construction deadline.
Then they should have started early.
May I point out something? The entrance there, if you look at that blown up inset, the sidewalk on the, that follows the, or is it a stone wall? I think it's a sidewalk on the right-hand side, dead ends in the middle of the extended shoulder that people already try to use to go to the two lanes down on, you can't have a sidewalk dead end[1647.02]